Meeting to order, please. I think we have a little bit of a crowd tonight. So, welcome. Thank you for coming out. Karen, do we have attendance? So, let's... Yeah, let's go into...
We're gonna change it.
Yeah, we're gonna do... Can I entertain a motion to change the agenda? What we're gonna do is... Let's see, the item of action for... Yes, so we're changing, if we could change the... Instead of canceling next month's board meeting, call for a closed session on real estate.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Oh, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so moved. Great, thank you for amending the agenda. Let's see. Moving on. The consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so moved. Moving along to citizens' comments. Do we have anyone here for citizens' comments? Alright Karen, let's get us going.
Good evening. I am so pleased to be here again this year doing the Summer Game, which you've expanded and I'm just loving this game. It's addictive. My adult son thinks I have lost my mind. So, anyway, thank you so much for continuing to do this. I know how much I have an idea that this is a lot of work. So, thanks again. I'm gonna take my picture and I'm outta here.
Alright, thank you.
Eli, the pins, are they laying there? Okay, alright. Don't forget your pin.
Oh no, I won't forget the pin.
Gotta go with your Josie pin. You already got that.
So, for those following along on YouTube, not only do you get points for coming up to give public comments, but there are enamel pins this year.
Hello. I too am an excited Summer Game fan and I would love to share my picture of my home with my son.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel that I'm so blessed to be in this community with the library. I am a volunteer here. I've volunteered for a few years now, on and off at different events. And I just, I love everything about the library. And thank you, thank you for providing everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I would like to thank Ann Arbor District Library, not just for English and foreign language books that are available, but also for variety of events and programs that are offered. All events are well thought and well organized. Programs like Summer Games, which my entire family enjoys. And I think Summer Game is a wonderful way to, not only to explore what library has to offer, but also to explore Ann Arbor. I was pleasantly surprised to know that one can borrow a variety of tools, from sewing machine to telescope from library. And I wish I had such library growing up. I would like to thank library staff who are always welcoming and helpful. I want to say special thanks to person who created Above Board Badge for Summer Game, which gave me this opportunity to express my appreciation for our library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I...
Gotta get covered.
Yeah, thank you.
I agree with everything that's been said. And I just love the Summer Game. It is a passion, has been for a while, and I always learn something. And then I run across books that are just gonna become my favorites. I enjoy exploring Ann Arbor. I especially appreciate the whole new remodel at Westgate. Westgate is beautiful now. When I first visited the different branches, I thought, "Well, what's wrong with Westgate?" But I don't think that anymore. And I so appreciate you. Thank you for all of your work. And I love the library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say something about the Summer Game because, well, everybody else is. And I should be teaching a Tai Chi class with my wife tonight, but we are both so addicted. She's like, "I got this. You go do that, we gotta get the code, we gotta get everything else." But really, our son moved back to Ann Arbor to go to school and he did not plan it well. And the roommates weren't there yet, so not enough money to get Comcast. So, he got a library card. And instead of borrowing money from us, he is like going, he's getting stuff from the library. He's using the internet. He got a theremin out. He's playing that at home. So, beyond the library game, thank you. Bucketbook thanks you. Everybody thanks you. So, you guys rock. Thank you so much. And yes, love the Summer Game like everybody else does. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, for your wife?
Because she's teaching.
Thanks for asking.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Schreiner and I'm a student at the university. In a short period of time, I've grown to love Ann Arbor. I can't wait to spend the next three years and potentially the rest of my life here. I'm working in Ann Arbor over the summer, but in my pastime, I've been coming to the library and actually reading books for fun again and not just studying. I've also been enjoying participating in the Summer Game, which I didn't know about until I came to an event here at the downtown branch for Ann Arbor's Japan Week. Since then, the game has encouraged me to explore Ann Arbor more than a whole school year did. So, thank you. I come from a small town not far from here and its library doesn't have nearly as many resources and events as this one here. Libraries enrich the minds and lives of people of all ages and I thank you for the resources you provided and contributing greatly to a positive Ann Arbor experience for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm here on behalf of myself and my 18-month-old son. Obviously, he can't speak for himself. But we moved to Ann Arbor from Kenya, Nairobi, Mwamasa. We've lived in both places. And my husband is now a student at Michigan. And with a young munchkin at home, we're trying to teach him three different languages, English, Swahili, and the Ma' language. My husband is Masai. That's just so he can speak with grandparents on both sides. But one thing... I was a bit surprised to find when we got here was there are no Swahili language books for kids in this library. And I sent an email to the Ask Us and she helped, the librarian helped us search Melcat. And literally, there were only seven books in all of the entire state of Michigan in Swahili for kids. So, that is one thing I'd like to suggest. Maybe this isn't the right place to do so, but that's my suggestion. Can we please get some more Swahili language books for the kiddos? There's 150 million people in East Africa that speak that language. We want our son to be one of them. Privileged enough to be here in Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Balheim?
Hey, Barbara Balheim. And I just want to thank the board for everything that you've done behind the scenes to help make this such a successful program. When I was preparing what I wanted to say, I thought it would be just filled with only children and I would be the first adult to show up. I'm just so moved that this program supports and really awakens the excitement for adults. For myself, most of the time, I read nonfiction, textbooks, and this has really awakened me to just explore and read some fun things over the summer. I want to thank, especially the programs, I've been very involved in the smell and tell programs. And although I knew this summer program was taking place, the bug bit me when I was recently at the Need Taste and Smell Program. So, thank you for supporting that. I think I've been to everyone that Michelle has done. And for everyone else here, it's open to children. Michelle does a wonderful job of really awakening and essential our senses for that. So, thank you for that program and for this summer program. It's been really fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can pull the mic down, it's easier.
Hello, my name is Stella. I think the Summer Game is amazing. I love all the points and the codes. And yesterday, me and my mom were just going around town looking for points. And I love that you can just get out of your house in the summer instead of just in front of the TV all day.
Thank you for coming.
Noah Walter?
Hello, my name is Noah Walter and I go to the school A-2 steam and I'm only going into 7th grade. I really enjoy the Summer Game because it gets me more active and it's just fun in general.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You know, one day, you could be on this side of the podium.
This is Parker Frye and he's five years old and he wanted to come and tell everybody.
Thank you for the summer codes. It was really hard to find them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parker, for coming.
Thanks for looking for the codes. Please come again.
Hello. I'm gonna try not to be emotional. But my family is moving in three weeks. So, I'm sorry too. Okay. Seven years ago... I'm gonna get it to... Seven years ago, I moved here with my family, including two boys, four and two. Unfortunately, when we came, my son was not very familiar with how diverse people are. Upon seeing a person of color, he was confused and asked me if they were burnt in the fire. I was mortified and knew that I needed to remediate that confusion immediately. I set off for the library. At the library, as experiences in the past have been similar, I shopped the books by their cover. I didn't want to do this. I knew that many wonderful written stories are not necessarily matched by amazing illustrations and vice versa. It was near that moment that I needed to handle this situation logically. I needed to give every book a fair chance. I needed to read every book. This library goal of read every single picture book started about five years ago. And to this day, we are now a family with four children and on the last row of the last shelf. I have three more weeks in Ann Arbor before we move. And we will have read every book, every picture book in the Traversewood Library. This has included thousands of adventures. Some not so good, but most amazing. On our big brown couch, we have laughed, cried, wondered, learned, grew, and developed at the words shared by thousands of authors and the illustrations shared by thousands of artists. I love this library and what it has done for my family. It has saved us money because we are poor college students. We're not needing to buy books. It has facilitated many book club discussions, which are my small group therapy sessions. It has propelled me in preparing for the GRE. I gained assistance in having sex talk with my children by renting out the male and female reproduction organs. It has taught me to become a better cook. Saved me during the long cold winters with thousands of dominoes, die-cut machines, marble bowling, and more. It has facilitated dates with my husband, girls out night out with my friends, and adventures with my children. I feel moved, privileged, spoiled, and loved by this library. Thank you for everything you bring to this community. Thank you for the life-changing moments you have provided for my family. Thank you for creating a place where I belong and I will treasure for the rest of my life. You will be sorely missed and greatly treasured. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to take a picture because I'm still playing. Okay, and my daughter wants to say something. Okay, what do you wanna say? Wanna say thank you? I got it. Say thank you. Thank you. She was part of the reading. She has read every single book in the Traversewood Library.
Thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Come back.
I will, once a year.
You'll be missed.
I just wanna also say, like everybody else, that I really enjoy the Summer Game and really, really enjoy the library as a whole. For like the events, all of the resources you guys have. And it's also really, really nice to see a board of women. Like, it's really nice to see that there are a lot of women. Like, that's good stuff. Alright, thank you.
Karen Madigan?
Hello, I'm a graduate student at the university and this is my first summer in Ann Arbor. And having the library and all of its really rich activities and especially this game has been just a really wonderful way to spend my time when I'm not in class or working. And I just really wanted to say thank you. This library has gotten me reading for pleasure again, which is something I hadn't done in all of my undergrad. And I feel like the most myself that I have since I graduated from high school. So, it's just been really wonderful. And I want to say thanks. I'm gonna take this.
Thank you.
Kristen Vanilla?
So, similar to how many others have echoed their gratitude and excitement about the Summer Game, that's why I'm here as well. I've been in Ann Arbor for, I was an undergrad. I've been working here for a long time. This is my first time even really realizing about the Summer Game. And I just wanted to kind of thank everybody about how amazing it has been in terms of realizing sort of what resources are there. In particular, I'll say the discovery that you have eBooks, which I never thought I would like and sort of resisted for decades, has been amazing. I feel like similar to how others have echoed, be able to read for pleasure and sort of integrating that into a otherwise busy lifestyle has been really amazing. And so, I wouldn't have discovered that if not for the Summer Game and sort of digging through, digging through the catalog, you know, for that purpose. So, thank you all very much. I'm grateful.
Thank you.
Yeah, Price?
I'm Tina Price. This is my family's third summer in Ann Arbor. I have five enthusiastic little code spotters. And I appreciate the Summer Game because it's helped me to get to know Ann Arbor a lot better and really to feel a part of the community. And so, that's been great for me. I wanted to thank you all for the recent renovation of the Mallett's Creek Branch. That is my home branch and it's a big improvement. Also, I know there's been a little bit of pushback on converting the Mallett's Creek Branch to the, I guess, the browsing system, whatever you call it. Yeah, yeah, along with Westgate. And I just wanted to come out in favor of that change. In a lot of respects, I'm a traditionalist. I, you know, I was a big library kid, so, you know, Dewey Decimal nerd. But I think, I think the new ways are great. So, it's, for example, my son, my five-year-old, was asking a lot of questions about how bridges are built. And I said, "Well, I don't know, but we'll get you a book at the library." And walking into Mallett's Creek, within two minutes, I was able to go see, oh, you know, engineering or whatever, Zohem on Bridges, and grabbed him three or four books within two minutes. So, that was great. Also, one suggestion I would have, we've had a couple of comments tonight about foreign language collections. The library has a lot of foreign language materials, which is fantastic. But my own personal pet language that I'd like to see more of is Portuguese, preferably Brazilian Portuguese. There is a decent-sized Brazilian community here in this area. And so, I think there would be a market for more Portuguese language materials. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Kim Ball?
Hi, I would like to say thank you for the Summer Game, for creating such an extensive reading program for me and my kids. And also, especially for the Arbor Explorer Series, we have gotten to go to some really cool places like Barton Dam that we probably wouldn't, maybe we would've made it there, but not necessarily in a quick amount of time. But I really, we really enjoy the Arbor Explorer badges too. So, thank you.
Thank you for the Summer Game. And I love all the books that we have at the Summer Game libraries. And I really like the libraries too.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. You can get your own pin. You don't have to share it with your mom.
I can grab it for her.
Yeah, okay.
Hello, more box. I just wanna echo what my wife said, the Summer Game and the libraries in general have just been awesome. Like, just a great activity for our family to get out and enjoy in Ann Arbor. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Sorry?
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
I like how your kids are really, they're really excited
Thanks.
to cheer both of you up here.
I really like the Summer Game and I like the things at Westgate where you twist the things and they change colors.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming out.
Hello. I just also wanted to say thank you for the Summer Game. I'm a U of M graduate of 2017 and I've been living here ever since I'm working. And this is the first summer I've ever done it and it's just so much fun and so exciting and awesome. And I do Shakespeare in the Art every summer. So, once that wraps up at the end of June, I just have nothing to do except work. So, now I have things to do and it's wonderful. So, thank you so much for putting all this together. It's really wonderful.
Thanks for coming.
Roy Schultz?
Hi, this is a familiar sentiment at this point. But I've lived in Ann Arbor since 2011 and I've played the Summer Games since 2016. And so, there's just so much that I've learned in those years of playing that I did not know before. And even now, like doing the Arbor Explorer, walking around town going, "There's a mural there." Like, "This building is connected to that thing" and I never realized this is where that was. So, that aspect of learning the city and the fact that this year's badges are focused on, you know, there's an event, like you should come to it, has been valuable to me. The fact of, you know, it's okay to like, to learn a new thing and be sort of bad at it, but enjoy it exuberantly. So, thank you for that exuberance and for giving us the tools during the summer to use the library more effectively all year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to tell you guys that I like the AATL system and I want you guys to keep it up.
Thanks. We promise.
Cory Reynolds?
Hi. I moved to Ann Arbor relatively recently, so I had actually heard about the Summer Game before the season started and I was excited to play this year. I'm gonna second what some other people have said. It's obvious that a lot of thought, time, and love have gone into planning the Summer Game. I've really enjoyed the Arbor Explorer badges and then also the offseason badges, where a ton of fun to do, especially because they're a little harder than some of the online badges that are released during the regular season. One suggestion I would like to make is that I do wish the branch badges dropped at the same time. The bus pass is nice, but for those of us who have a bike only, it can be a little hard to get out to all the different libraries three or four or five times because we don't know that the next badge is dropping. And it'd be really nice if I could just go and like, spend a full day in Pittsfield instead. Other than that, I think the only thing that would be nice to have is maybe some pre-registration or like, online show of interest forms. I really wanted to go to the Japan Week sushi event, so I was pretty disappointed when I showed up and I think all the tickets were sold out before the event even started. Thank you so much. I've really enjoyed the game. And keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I volunteer here, so I meet the different branches a lot. And I've noticed parking-wise, the other branches seem to have more of the 15-minute spots, whereas people use the handicap parking here for the 15-minute spot. And that's kind of a, something I thought you should know about. But yeah, everything else is awesome. Thank you for the pin and everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. So, I usually hate public speaking, but I'm gonna go ahead and face it. You can't do that, being a lawyer. So, thank you for the Summer Game. It actually got me out to count my steps, which is great. My sister thinks I'm obsessed, but it's true. Also, I've learned a lot about Ann Arbor because I'm born and raised here and I'm just like, I never knew this was there. I've gone to parks I've never gone to. I was in a cemetery once. So, that was fun. I've gone to parks I've never gone to. I was in a cemetery once, so that was fun.
And lived to tell it.
I did. I couldn't find the last guy's grave, and I'm like, "I gotta get out of here." Also, like, the Goblin Games you guys have, because even though they're, I feel like they're made for children. As an adult, I'm like, "I don't get it." So I think that just brings out the kid that you realize you don't, or you get the more knowledge. Sometimes it's like, stop thinking so much. So, thank you for that, and thank you for a great job, and I love the Summer Game.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nina Yetti?
Hi, I'm kinda scared to speak, but I just wanted to say, I have actually been in Ann Arbor since 1963. I was brought here when I was three. And so the library has always been a special place for us. So I really enjoy the library a lot. And I remember when I was a kid, the Summer Game just involved reading. I think, I think we had to read 10 books as a kid. And then, then there was a magic show, a really great magic show. I think it was in this room when I was a little kid. And, but now the library, I'm grateful that the Summer Game has so many adult people that participate, too, because it's just a really lot of fun, and it's like a summer school. I always look forward to it every year, so it's just been a lot of fun. And as Ann Arbor is getting bigger and bigger, and it's just feeling like very disassociated, a lot of people moving in, and I just feel like I can always come to the library and see people that I remember from years and years, and it's still the same library, and it's just sort of a constant in this very growing Ann Arbor that's, I feel, is changing quite a bit. So, and also, one of the Explorer badges are also my favorite, and one of my many favorites of all the badges. And I thought the Carrie Town badge was especially interesting this year. A lot of history that I remember as a little kid and has changed, that area of town has changed quite a bit, so I'm really glad that that was brought back for the game. So thank you for the game. Every year I love it, and I'm always a little afraid, like, I hope we never end it. Because it's a lot of fun every year, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can see it means a lot to me.
Laura Rico?
Good evening. I would just like to thank all the staff, librarians, volunteers who have made the Summer Game so amazing. This is my first time participating, and I'm enjoying it a lot. My sister and I will go downtown and spend an afternoon trying to find all the codes. The first time I mentioned to her, like, "Keep your eyes out for the codes. They're everywhere." She looked at me like I didn't know what I was talking about. But we quickly, like, were able to bond over just trying to find codes and going online and doing the searches. I would also like to thank the library, everyone who's made it possible to put on the letterpress lab and as well as the drawing for adults program. Just like another individual pointed out or spoke of, her being a creative individual, and then after a certain time in the year, there isn't, for me, there isn't a lot I was able to sign up for to be creative. But you guys, the library, throughout the year have always provided such interesting creative programs. So, big shout-out to all who put on the letterpress every week. It's a lot of joy to come and attend and just be able to be creative and meet other folks. Thank you all so much, and hope you guys have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sam Landers?
Hello, I just want to say that I'm enjoying the Summer Game and that I'd like to thank everyone who's worked so hard on it. I know that it takes a lot of work for you all to do. And just to thank the library and all the people that work for the libraries, for all the work that you do. Like I say, I know it's a lot of hard work. And speaking for, on behalf of myself and others, I know that I just, it's all very much appreciated. And I hope you all have a wonderful night, and, okay, I really run out of stuff to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When I was one, you read to me.
Thank you. When Crystal was two, you sang to her, too.
Thank you.
I work for Ann Arbor Schools, and I'm a founder of a small number profit.
We use the library resources quite a bit.
When Crystal was three and four, she wanted to go back to the library for more.
When I was five and six, I liked science events that was using a mix.
Thanks for the Summer Game fun.
I hope the rhyming's almost done.
Thanks for the loan forgiveness. We both love Spanish dancing and local corn chips.
Sometimes my mom's rhyming annoys me, and by now it's probably annoying, too.
So, we say goodbye, and now we have something for you.
No way, thank you!
All right, I'm definitely gonna cry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Special writing? Oh, wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, my goodness.
That was fantastic, thank you.
So, there's special writing.
Oh, my goodness.
Hi, I'm Emily. My name wasn't called. I just came for the code, so. What else can I say? Well, I thought I'd say a couple things that I really love about the Summer Game. First of all, the things, I have three kids. They're two, seven, and 10. So they have a wide range of interests, and I love that there's so many different activities for them. They all love the Goblin Game, so I think that's a great game for kids. And finding the cards and figuring out the codes and the riddles, that's kind of something for each of them. All-in-one activities, so that's awesome. And for me, I really love that the Summer Game makes me do lots of things I wouldn't normally do, not just stand at podiums on a video. But also, like, last week I went to the first trivia night that the library had, and I've never actually been to a trivia night before. I mean, I always thought that would be so fun, but never really had the guts to do it. But somehow that extra, like, push of, "But you have to get the code," kind of gets you to places that you might otherwise come up with an excuse to not go to. So, I think that's great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Well, thank you so much, everyone, for coming. We're going to continue our board meeting and deliberate on how we make things happen at the library. There's actually a lot more than the Summer Games. So, you're more than welcome to stay, but we are not offended if you need to walk away and find more codes throughout the library that you haven't discovered yet. Yes. Yes. All right. Thank you again, and good luck. I think 28 is a record. I counted 28. Oh, amazing. Totally amazing.
You need the code, Crystal? Ah, got it.
I really appreciate how there's a sentiment of, you know, finding the library as a home and a place of comfort for folks to push themselves, to find some place that's familiar, but then also pushes them to find new ways to discover each other and the city. So that was beautiful. Yes, so kudos to staff. We come up here every month and sit behind these microphones, but it's really the staff that make, that make the engine work. Great. All right, should we move on to financial reports?
Yes.
Josie?
Eli and I can do this together. You have in this packet the May monthly financial report and the June. And you also have a resolution that this is, the end-of-the-year numbers are preliminary. We don't have all of our invoices in for June. Because of the date of the board meeting, it's early relatively, we're getting those things in. So we're still, we're still gonna have to have a final budget to come to you with final numbers in September. We have an open board meeting. But we don't expect a lot of, we don't expect a lot of big changes, but just so you understand, it's preliminary. I, the resolution is pretty straightforward. There is, there are two changes that needs to be made. And for those people in the audience who follow public money, the public library must have a balanced budget at the end of its fiscal year. So where money needs to adjust in line items, because it's approved as a line item budget, this is when we do that, so that it balances at the end of the year. So we're gonna transfer $1,000 from library program to grant some memorials to offset a $775 over at the end of the year. And then $30,000 from salaries and wages to accounting and audit, because we know, because we've had the need due to a staff illness, to contract accounting services from early June, probably through all of the summer and perhaps a little longer. We know some of those bills are gonna go back, reach back to June. We don't have them yet. We should get them soon, so that amount of money should take care of that. The other thing that I want to say, when you look at the budget and the final numbers, you'll see most of the lines in the budget show money unspent. And some of those are super close to their amounts, and that's, I thanked the management staff this morning for how well they've handled this. It's our finance manager who's unable to be here, and his, he's excellent at making sure everyone knows exactly where they are within their budget category. And while we've had support, account support, not to that level of service within the unit. So people have had to manage that well on their own, and they've done such a good job of it. And so we didn't spend all the money, but we were very close, and that's a pretty amazing thing, frankly, because it could have been the other way. It could have very easily have been the other way, and it's not. So I want to thank everyone publicly for, we all had to pitch in here with no notice and in a situation that was upsetting for us all, and I've done a pretty good job of it. So I want to thank everyone. So does anyone have any questions about anything you see here?
Yes.
Interest, interest income?
Where, what page are you, give me a page.
My age, 30.
Okay.
Our estimate was that it would be $20,000, and we got over $200,000. I'm just wondering why.
If I recall correctly, last year we had an extremely small amount of interest income, possibly because of when CDs were coming due and things like that.
So we just carried the estimate forward.
So I think we budgeted for that to be a very low amount for the following year, hoping that more revenue would.
It's cautious. It's cautious.
And in timing, right?
Yeah. And timing, and looking at CDs and how we manage that with the banks. Good question. Thank you. Anyone else?
So Josie, you don't anticipate any problems reconciling the end of, end of year?
No.
Okay.
No. I think we've, we generally know, each department knows where they, what they have still out. We know what we're expecting. Our accounts person knows what we're expecting. So I think we've pretty well dealt with it. But it's preliminary because we know we don't have them all in.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Nope.
Great. Moving on to committee reports. Executive Committee was unable to meet. We just had some short notice changes, but I was able to chat a bit with Josie and just kind of trying to think about what the next, well, we won't be in session, in a board session for next month, but we'll have a closed session. Just kind of planning out our schedules. I don't think we, that was pretty much it. It was a quick chat. But the hope is to actually convene the executive committee, hopefully, if not in August, then in September again, and things start picking up again. And that would be with Karine, Trustee Moore, and Estee Leha.
And I'd also, I'd also offer the, we, we, it would be good to have a finance committee meeting in August when we have better, we have the numbers final, as well as meet with yo and yo, our auditors, about the process going forward from your point of view. Because we, even though we've had a situation where our finance manager's not in, we're moving forward with the audit on time, so we're continuing that. So they'll begin, I mean, they've already begun, and that might be a good check-in for the finance committee at that time in August, if we can make it happen.
I was guessing you were gonna need to do that in August.
Yes, yes, yeah. Hopefully, we can work around, we can schedule, everybody schedules.
Great. Strategic Planning Committee?
Sure. Also, maybe there's one more family that might want to.
Oh, could you all want to come, come up?
Come on down. Get those points.
Come on, right up there.
And we won't make you wait for us to deliberate. Please, please feel free to. Say what you like.
This is my first year playing the Summer Game. It's really good. I'm enjoying it a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Do you see the code?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you see the pin? Yeah, make sure to take a pin. They're super cool. For everyone.
Two pins.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Thanks, Jamie. That was great. Thank you for coming.
For strategic planning, we met with Anika and Carrie. And Anika presented to us last month, you all might remember, and we had some discussion. So essentially, we met about how, you know, after they listened to us, how they felt they needed to adjust what they had prepared so far. Sort of like, basically a check-in to figure out, you know, this is kind of what we thought we heard. How do you feel about what you heard, and then this is how we think we should proceed? And one of the results of that discussion was that we are likely to have some small group discussions coming up with maybe like, one or two people, Anika and Carrie, over the next month or two. And maybe those will focus on the values that the library holds, the values or something that the board votes on. And we've had the same values for 20 years, is that right?
Close.
Josie, yeah, so there's, you know, a sense that they are very important to us now, still. But, you know, maybe we should all talk about them. And so we'll probably have some activity like that over the next six weeks or so, I would guess.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Any questions?
Do you feel we're on track then?
Totally.
Yeah, I mean, we're January due date, right? Anything I left out? Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to Director's Report, Josie.
Thank you. You have the written report. I just want to report out about Mallett's Creek. You see the River Burks Room and the Rain Garden Room. And already, there are over 40 bookings for these two spaces, and just in the month of July. I know there are bookings out into August as well, but just in the month of July. So the, there will be a screen in the River Burks Room, which is on the north wall of the library, and so that's gonna happen. Then, we had over 1,500 people attend Summer Game Spectacular Saturday. Then, we had over 1,500 people attend Summer Game Spectacular Saturday. And some of you were there, and along with us, and trying to stay cool and have fun at the same time. It was great. And we, you know, it's, it's not possible to say what people enjoy more, because I think people just make with rounds. They see it all, and because there are codes everywhere, but they see, there were 17 codes at the spectacular. And most people got them off, because we weren't trying to hide them, they were just there. But it's all ages. That's what's remarkable about it to me, is little people with, carrying their babies, little children. The, the most fun is watching toddlers try to do a hula hoop. And the most successful way to do that is to hold it and turn around in circles. Works fine that way. So we really thank the staff who were involved in that, because there was a ton of work. And it was a hot day, but people had a great time, so thank you. The, we have, we have expansion of storytime into other languages besides English. We have Chinese, Japanese, Arabic, Spanish, and Korean. Chinese storytime is well established. We've had a, we had a group using the free space to conduct Chinese storytime. And then we worked with them to incorporate it into a public offering at the library. And they were wonderfully happy. And you have a thank you note from them in your materials. So we're moving into other languages with support from people in the community and who are helping us, and so we're very grateful for that. NARCAN. Those of you who follow state government know that the legislature sent a package of bills to the governor, and she signed into law of bills that will allow employees of certain public entities, including public libraries, to administer NARCAN without liability. So the ADL will have staff training for administering NARCAN to all staff at Staff Day. And I did explain in an email to the library board, while everyone will know, not everyone is compelled to act. So we're leaving it up to the individual, whether or not in a certain circumstance they feel they need to act. And that's, that's how this library is choosing to handle that. So I wanted you to know that. That training is in November for All Staff Day, because we want all staff to be, get the training. So that's the first opportunity without closing the library. And I didn't feel like that was necessary. Because this is new, the Sheriff's Department, AEPD are catching up to it with us. It's important that the emergency crews and HVA know if we're doing this, and if we have the potential to do this, as they make their, as they answer. We will still do everything exactly the way we always did it, calling 911. They will come. But in those minutes between, NARCAN saves lives. And so they need to know that we're trained up and have it. And so we're, it's good that there's time between now and November to make sure all that's going on, so. Downtown drop box. This is an interesting point that someone made earlier about the parking, the handicap parking being used for drop-offs. Well, that won't be possible once the bike lanes have, go in on William, because parking on the north side of William goes away, and that's where the handicap parking is. Handicap parking will be, is the library lane parking. Two spaces in front of the library will be short-term parking or quick run-ups. And so the new drop slot will be right where you see that sign, by the front door, on the top of the porch, under the porch, right under the cover of the porch. So it'll be accessible from both ramps up and from the steps straight up. And we're hoping that the two 15-minute spaces, short-term spaces, will prevent people from stopping in traffic to bring books up to the front porch, which was a problem we had years ago. And that's why the drop box was placed around on the side of the building, was to alleviate that, that. So we're moving the drop box, because parking is going away on that side. So bike parking will be right in front, and then around to the north side of the building. This is, we won't have this open right as they begin construction, but it will be as soon after that as we can make it happen, so. And these are the prizes for this year's Summer Game shop, which opened Friday, our online shop. So for those of you who haven't had a chance to see what they are, here's the, here's the selection. So if you're shopping, the other thing to know is that everyone is allowed to purchase four things from the shop. Nothing will run out, the way this is being done now. So if you're accumulating your points and you want to spend them at the end of the summer, you do not have to worry that the thing you want won't be available. We, we are not doing it, we're doing it differently so that that does not happen. You may buy four different things, four of one thing, two of two, however you want to put that combination together, four things. You may buy as much as you want from last year's shop until it's all gone. No guarantees on that, so. Helps with that. Pittsfield and Treberwood closures are in planning, and they'll be, the closures are planned from September through November of the fall. Want to make sure everybody understood that. And then the, some of the love for Treberwood, the Sip Meyer writes, "I get giddy when I experience beautiful and thoughtful design, like the A Square District Library's Treberwood location, public building, eye candy." I've never heard it called "public building, eye candy," and I really like that. Big chess downtown. That's a lot of people playing chess. When you have family in town, what's your first stop? For Uncle Caden and this little one, it's the library. A rock concert in the library? Heck yeah, the ADL. Harry and the Potters put on an amazing show in the lobby at the end of June. It was loud, but it was fun, and it was very well-publicized that it was going to be loud, and it was fun. Our ADL Summer Game signs are popping up in yards and windows all over town. You saw someone tonight who was proud to show you that. And here's one in the wild, and they're available at the public desks while they last. We gave out, I don't know, hundreds at the spectacular Saturday, hundreds, so. Some, Eileen Thomas. I actually, I can tell you a little something. Eileen Thomas and I worked together at Ipsy. Eileen had an MBA, and she was working as a clerk at the Ipsy Library when I was manager of the youth department. And I talked Eileen into doing her degree, because she really, really wanted a career in libraries. And when Eileen got into it, Eileen decided what she really wanted to do was be a school librarian, so she did. And she finished that degree, and she worked out at Lakewood Elementary School for years and recently retired. So, Eileen, I was glad to see that. This is some love for Nerd Night, which hosted its 65th event in June. We have not been involved, obviously, for 65 years, and Nerd Night is a thing. But we have, this person says, "My repeated gushing about Nerd Night at work is working, and every soul who comes keeps coming back for more," so this is really good. How many years have we done Nerd Night?
Been involved with it since like, in the 20s.
Yeah, right. In early, yeah. Our partnership with AAATA continues with free ride weekends during the Summer Game, free rides every Saturday and Sunday with an ADL card. And I'll just say out loud, I'll make a pitch right now, it's a great way to get downtown for art fair, if you're coming on the weekend. Last week, we hosted our Zingerman Summer Game food testing event with about, with 400-plus people. We did have enough food. This was something we learned last year about how to do this. So we had two sessions, and so people could come to the first section, first session or the, or the second, not both, and there was plenty of food. A piece in pulp mentions local musician Charles Trees. We prompted this praise from the artist. I use synths I checked out from ADL on my record. It's on the show, so lucky to have this resource. Really cool. This visitor described your typical summer weekend at the ADL this way. They stopped by a live recording of a college football podcast in the NPR, passing through the packed sushi-making demo in the lobby. Weekend night and people flock to their library, healthy communities have imaginable, have imaginative libraries like ADL. And our new RPG book collection caught the attention of interested players in the community on Twitter and on our locally-produced podcast about role-playing games. On Saturday, this NASA Solar System ambassador will join us to talk about the Apollo 11 mission and NASA's plans for visiting the moon again. She tweeted this out, and shortly thereafter received a like from a familiar name, Michael Collins. Yes, the Michael Collins, Apollo 11 astronaut, who I read is 90-something. I read that, I read this in the paper Sunday. Finally, one patron spent a Saturday riding their bike from one ADL location to the other, tracking down Summer Game codes and checking out items. They chronicle their journey in this series of tweets, and I'm going to leave it to you to follow this. He went everywhere. Everywhere. Thank you. That's my report. Any questions about anything?
Josie, can you remind us why Treberwood and Pittsfield are being closed?
Same, we're adding meeting rooms to both.
The meeting room renovations.
So Treberwood is also carpeting, and a new carpeting, and touch-up in there with paint where it's needed. But we're adding a meeting room, one meeting, there's a, there's a, there's room for one meeting room at Treberwood, and it's near the computer center area. And then we're taking, at Pittsfield, that re-carpeting was done the year after Westgate opened, or I think it's after Westgate opened, the year after. So that's, it's not a floor thing there, it's strictly about meeting rooms. We are, that, that computer lab has never been utilized to its capacity. So we are taking that computer lab and making it into a large meeting room, similar to Free Space down here. And in the, it would be the southeast corner, behind the reading room to the edge, there's space for two small meeting rooms, much like what you saw at Mallett's Creek in the back corner. We're adding two of those there, and then the larger space. And computers at Pittsfield will be where computers are now, outside the computer lab. So we find that that is the, that's the amount, so that's what, that's what that's about. Thank you.
Do you have any thoughts about BISAC for the other branches? Like, would you use the closure to do that?
We will use the closure to do that. We were, we will, we will use the closure to move those collections to categories. And depending, we, and we'll be making a decision shortly about which ones first. We're waiting on some numbers from the construction company about how to do a couple of things before we make a decision about which way to go. We don't talk anymore about that. But whichever one goes first is, we'll start working on it. Yes.
And then that means only downtown will have the traditional, do we
Correct. Changing a system, changing a collection this size is a different animal than the branch collections, yes. But eventually, as well, I mean, eventually, yeah.
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate in the, the game shop, how there's support for local, local vendors, local businesses. So I noticed Arvertiz was in there, and even the artwork for all the posters, I think it's a, he's a local artist.
That's right.
Right. So, thanks for that. Sorry? Awesome. Fantastic, these partners.
Yes, and, and it's important to use the local business with tax money. I mean, it's important. I mean, not saying that we do it all the time, because we don't. But to the extent that we can, we do.
Thank you. Thank you for making that, that concerted effort. Any other questions for Josie? No? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Moving along. Old business. Len, update on construction projects.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Josie mentioned, we have the first week of September scheduled for, to start the next step with the meeting room projects. I think it's Treberwood will go first at this point, but we are still waiting on a few things. Each, each branch will be scheduled for six to eight weeks, and should take us into the early part of December. But other than that, hopefully it goes smooth, just like Mallett's Creek.
One branch at a time.
Yes.
Just so we're all clear.
Yeah. We are moving forward, getting closer to having construction numbers for the fourth-floor meeting room here, to eliminate that curved wall, move the podcast room, the control room, add seating for about 20 to 30 people on the fourth floor. So hopefully we'll have those numbers for you in September. And addressing the battery back, or the backup power generators at the branches, we've had a few meetings. We should have construction estimates for that in September, and some of the site conditions as well for the utility work. So moving right along, hopefully hit everything in front of you guys in September. Any questions?
So Len, for the fourth-floor meeting room, is it going to be flexible seating? I mean, you said 20 or 30 more seats, but it's going to be an open space like this?
It is, yes. You know, with this stage, this kind of
Yeah.
puts us in a box of what we can use this room for. And the curved wall in that room does the same thing. So if that wall is a 90-degree wall, kind of move things back, eliminate that concrete curved wall, and that's where you gain about 20 to 30 seats. And we can also switch the orientation of the room once you do that. So it makes it easy, you know, to, to have programs and events that have different needs. It can be a long room, it could be a wide room. So we're trying to address all that.
But this is still our largest meeting room. It won't hold as many seats as this room.
When it's, when it's complete, it will.
It will?
Yes.
A whole more.
Wow.
I think we're at about 180 now, and with the square footage up there, I think that'll go to around 225 or 230.
But, but here, we sometimes have people up here talking to the 200 people down here.
No, 120 in this room.
120.
120. You might have people standing around.
Yeah.
But you won't have more than 120 chairs.
And then what about the auditorium?
300 there.
300, okay. We're really packing them in.
Yes, oh yeah. And it's, you know, to gain 30 seats on some of the programs, it's pretty big deals.
Yeah, I've been in this room where people are standing who really can't stand for a whole meeting, so it's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for finding room.
Great, thank you so much.
Great. Great. On to new business. We have a resolution to amend the 2018, 2019 budget. Josie had spoken about this earlier when reviewing our finances. I get someone to read the resolution? It's, I know it's strange with Trustee Leha not here.
I know. Jim should just automatically start reading.
I can, I can do it.
Can you?
I can.
All right.
It's a short one. If it were a long one, I'd "The board resolves as follows: To transfer $1,000 from library programming to grant, to grants and memorial expenditures. To transfer $30,000 from salaries and wages to accounting audit. That all resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution shall are rescinded. A vote on foregoing resolution..." Oh, I stopped there, sorry.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Moving on, so we, it was a, we had a vote to, originally, we had planned to vote to cancel the August 19 regular board meeting, and we've changed that to a closed session. Yes, so let's go ahead and do a roll call on that then. Karen?
We, we need a motion.
Oh, yes.
"I move that we cancel the August regular board meeting and have a closed session in August."
Second?
For real estate purposes. Yes, Rick, thank you.
At the same time, like seven?
Yes. Actually, you could make it six o'clock if you wanted to. We can take, that's not part of the resolution.
Jamie, did you second it, or?
I seconded.
Okay, Karine, thank you. And you just, oh no, roll call. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Great, thank you, Karen. Next up, vote for closed session at the September 16, 2019 regular board meeting for discussion of real estate.
"I move that we have closed session at the September board meeting for the discussion of real estate."
Second?
Great.
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone. Um, citizens' comments. Do we have anyone else? No, this is your moment. Great, well, thank you, everyone. We will see each other next month, and we'll see everyone else in September. Thank you.